The rezoned the property at 171 East Fifth Street from older neighborhood, single-family residential R3 to residential office RO. And I'll call that public hearing to order as we speak.
Okay, thank you. I just want to go over this for people in the audience, the process. There was a meeting about the zoning change with the committee that was turned into the Law Director's Office. Then the legislation has been read two times for City Council. It is required by law before a zoning change is made and we have a public hearing, which is what this is now, to make sure that there are no problems with the zoning change. All cities have zoning regulations to establish and organize areas of comparable land usage. This is done to protect residents as well, so if you buy a house in a residential neighborhood, you will not have a factory built on a parcel of land next door. Sometimes a good use of a building does not match the uses or continual uses of a particular zone. In this case, the owner may go before the Planning Commission to ask the property obtain a different zoning status. And that is what has happened here. Habitat for Humanity had a house where the occupants had moved and stopped paying, and they deeded the house back to Habitat. Habitat wants to use this house as their office and serve as a model home to show their clients. The change would be to residential office district. The change necessitates the addition of more parking places behind the house, and Habitat has agreed to do those. Additionally, the change is granted with the understanding that if the property should ever be sold or in any way change hands, it would revert back to its original R3 designation. And this will be the final reading tonight to pass the zoning. And I have this open now for any comments or questions from council or the audience. Any members of the audience wish to ask questions about the zoning change or the
general issue of it in general? Mr. Mayor? Pretty cut and dry.
I have gotten, I have gotten no negative input from anybody in the community. None whatsoever.
Okay, no further discussion? Again, any member of the audience, last call, as they would say? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames, for your explanation. We'll call this public hearing to a close. And now we will call our City Council Legislative Meeting to order. Mr. Clerk?
Ames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Prohl.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Tatman.
Here.
Trutzel.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to ask everybody to rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you guys have provided the minutes of our last meeting in your packet. I'm glad that everybody's liking it. Mr. Bonner?
I'm making motion to accept the minutes.
Seconded by Mr. Prohl. Prohl called to accept the minutes?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Reports of committees. Mr. Patrick?
Thank you, President Reinhart. First thing I would like to do on behalf of the special committee that was formed to address clandestine drug laws is to make a motion to reconsider the passage of ordinance 1019-14. And the reason for this is the ordinance number was not inserted into Exhibit A. So we just need to go through a couple procedural things to get it corrected.
You making that motion now? Okay, seconded by Mr. Bonner.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance number 19-14 as previously passed and amend by substituting the new version with the correct exhibit for the original from the original version. I would like to make that motion now.
Motion on the table to amend by substitution, seconded by Mr. Bonner. Prohl called to amend by substitution?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Yes, and the chair, that is definitely not a significant change.
Thank you. And at this time, this motion to so amend now calls for another vote on the actual ordinance. It's been amended and corrected and we vote on it. So I would like to make that motion now.
Seconded by Mrs. Gray. Prohl called?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
It is amended.
And I would like to personally thank the clerk for writing all this out for me. Been here 11 years and never had anything like that.
That's called curveball.
Yeah.
And thank you for bringing that forward, Mrs. Patrick.
Now I would like to report on item number three. It's the first reading of an ordinance appropriating $5,000 for the utility department for postage. And this is just so they can work with the post office to have a steady stream of income to pay for the postage that we use. And at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three reading rule and pass this. And I would like to report on assignment number 14-05, the sewer use ordinance update. It will not be ready for another four weeks, according to Richard Johnson. And then, I've got one more thing, just a quick update from the utility billing department. So far, at the end of March, we've had 469 customers who've signed up for online bill pay and 71 customers who have signed up to receive food bills. So we're going to start really advertising these in the next couple months and hopefully we will see that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Parks and Rec Committee has one item on the agenda tonight, as item number four, the first reading to appropriate $10,000 from unappropriate parks and recreational capital to fund the purchase of trees by the Chillicothe Tree Commission. It's something that we do quite often, buy the trees. The trees are on their way, not here yet, but should be here in a few days. So at the appropriate time, I ask that we grade that rule. And to kind of continue along with that, on Tuesday, April 22nd, at the Ross County Service Center, Old Rossburg, there will be a public meeting, obviously some of the leaders form as the Parks and Rec Chair, along with myself, a lot of members of the tree commissions there. This is an informative meeting. Last, a couple weeks ago, with the South Hickory Street situation, kind of was an unpleasant thing. And I think maybe there's some people in the wrong with the reputation. So we're going to try to clarify things. And I'm not going to go through the whole meeting right now, but just a couple quick ones that maybe help to get those out. One, not only does the tree commission never put a tree where it's not wanted, they always ask first. They have made some markings and some of the people in Hickory, you know, right through South, by the neck, jumped the gun and thought the tree commission was going to put those in without asking. It was never the tree commission's intent to put a tree in without asking. They would never do that. And when the trees on the South Hickory, and most of the, I said, I grew up in South Hickory, my mom still lives in South Hickory, so I know this area about as well as I could know anything. Those trees were planted long before the tree commission was ever established, and they were the wrong type of trees that were planted in that area. As everyone knows, our tree commission, right now, you know, I don't want to be a bragging on our city, but try to find a city of 25,000 that has as experienced and knowledgeable tree commissioners as we do. You're not going to find it. These guys really know what they're doing. The trees that are going to be planted now will suit the neighborhood. They won't be the trouble with, you know, causing breaks in sidewalks and things like that. So that's just some of the information we want to try to get out and let people know the trees are available. So if you want a tree, you know, come here. I think it's going to be a very informative meeting. I'd like to thank the mayor for getting this ball rolling. He saw kind of a little hiccup there and jumped right on it. And Mike Green for making this possible. So that is April 22nd at 6:00, Ross County Service Center. Then Wednesday, April 16th at 6:00 PM, at the municipal building on Pinch Street, there will be a Parks and Rec meeting. This will discuss the capital spending plan. Dave Tenner, hats off to him, has done a great job in, you know, working with the mayor, working with the master plan for the parks, and has some really, really good ideas. And I think people are going to like to hear the vision that we have, that he has, and I'll take any credit for that, for over the next five years. I mean, we're always talking about planning, proactive, five-year plan. This is a real nice plan. We're going to talk about that next, or not next, this Wednesday, April 16th, 6:00. And that concludes my report. 25,000.
What time?
6:00.
Is there going to be a Parks and Rec meeting?
It's going to follow the Parks and Rec meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Mr. Prohl?
Safety Service Committee has an item I need to add to tonight's agenda by requesting that we please waive the three-day receipt rule. This ordinance corresponds with assignment 14-58, dealing with receiving $3,500 and some police department training, appropriating it. So I would like to make a motion to add this to tonight's agenda.
The motion will be to waive the three-day receipt rule. Seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Prohl called to waive the three-day receipt rule?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are waived, and that will be item number eight.
At the appropriate time, so that we can, with this money to use, I will request that we waive the pre-read rule. This is money that we, excepting appropriating $3,500 received from the Ross County Auditor's Office to be used by the Chillicothe Police Department for training. Part of this money comes from the fully training program, $2,500, and part of it from crisis training, which is $1,000.
Any other reports of committees?
Engineering Committee has two items on the agenda tonight, number five, request for $26,000, $20 for late 11, for engineering. At this time, I'm requesting that we don't read that from there. If there's any questions, come on up and check them out. Number six.
Any other second to that?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Seconded by Mrs. Gray, for not to read item number five. Prohl called?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item five will not be read.
All right, and number six, request for a street light on 26 South West Street. Apparently since they closed down that drive down there, they need some extra light. And at this time, I'm requesting a assignment for the council, a special committee, to study proposal on a tax to go toward the street maintenance. I believe this is serious enough that we need to have a special committee to put our heads on the table on this. I was surprised today, a gentleman I ran into, Paul Thurman, you remember Paul Thurman? He actually gave me a good endorsement. He said it's about time that somebody was there to try to figure out a way to get streets to take care of.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patrick. Any other reports of committees? Showman?
Community Affairs has one item on the agenda tonight, item number seven, to approve the current replacement pages for the Chillicothe codified ordinances and our plus the pre-reading rule is waived if they're appropriate.
Okay, we'll waive that at the end of the session.
Safety Service does have another item I would like to mention. Item number two, which is to amend the city's program to charge a user fee for emergency medical services provided by the Chillicothe Fire Department. This is provide, this is about hard billing of non-residents. And again, the way the billing works normally, you receive, you know, you receive services from our fire department for emergency, you would receive a bill. Part of that would of course be paid for by your insurance company. And the rest, as it would currently be, under soft billing, would be basically forgiven and at a cost to the city. We will continue soft billing for residents of the city, but if this passes tonight, this would make any billing towards non-residents a hard billing, which means they would be expected to pay the amount beyond what their insurance was willing to cover.
Thank you, Mr. Prohl. Any other reports of committees? Moving forward, reports of officials. Mayor Everson?
Thank you, President Reinhart. I'd like to start off by talking about large item pickup. There's been a lot of questions being raised about if we're going to be doing it, when we're going to be doing it. And just as a note of history, the average cost for a large item pickup, which consists of five weeks of taking the each, like a Monday pickup, we go for a week in a certain sector of the garbage pickup routes. Tuesday would be the next week. Wednesday pickups would be the third week. Thursday, the fourth, Friday, the fifth week. Typically runs the city about $70,500 in costs. Watching our budgets and the way that the service department had refused to end of it, and it's typically blown the overtime so far this year with all the snow block that we're doing, and hopefully we won't have to do any tomorrow or tonight. We've got our fingers crossed on that. But running a full five-week program is just not going to be feasible. So what we're coming up with, and what I'd like to announce tonight, is that there will be, for citizens that are able to take large items to the Rennick site, we will have that site open on Saturdays, starting on April 26th, May the 3rd, and May the 10th. And we'll do a press release on that, just to clarify. Rennick site will be open from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM for residents to come and drop off their items. We'll be manned. We will be checking driver's license to make sure that no county folks are taking advantage of the service. But anybody that's able to take large items down to the Rennick site will do so on those three Saturdays, and we'll dispose of it accordingly. Following that, we will discuss the strategy for call-in pickups for large items, where we will go and make the pickup actually at the resident's house for a date to be determined. But understand that that involves a front-end loader to place the items into a dump truck. You have to have two dump trucks working in tandem, so people aren't standing. That's how we handle large item pickups. We have no heavy equipment or anything other way to do that. Historically, that's the way we've done residential large item pickups. So to put a program into place to where there is some relief for residents of the city, those that are able to take it down to the Rennick site, we will take it over to Rennick from there after we load it up with that one site. And that'll save us considerable amount of money, to be hopeful. And like I said, we'll be coming out with a program later on in the, after this is concluded to go get the project started ourselves. Any questions on that? Good. I'd like to commend Councilwoman Neal for taking a ride along here recently with the police department. That is open to any citizen, and I strongly urge the members of council to follow suit and actually see what our brave men and women of the Chillicothe Police Force are doing. Currently have two programs that are in play. One is a larger battle against the war on drugs here in Chillicothe, called the DART course. And it involves multiple agencies across the city. And down towards just the Chillicothe Police Department, Operation Stand Up is in play and is proving to be very successful in that. And I think you can see the number of drug busts that we make and races we make in the city has picked up considerably. That's going to be the tone going forward. If council would like, I would love to give a presentation along with Chief Moore to council with more specifics on what those two programs involve. I think you folks need to know about that. And we can get that date together if it's so inclined to do that, and we'll put that together. But I think that the ride-alongs really are telling with what a day in the life of a Chillicothe police officer is like. Fire Department also offers ride-alongs with EMS squads and the Fire Department, which somebody's in action right now. Fire's always perked up when I hear that. But the, you know, we have exceptional safety forces in this city. I don't think you're going to find better trained and more dedicated men and women in any other town. So I encourage you to take a ride along with them and see what they go through. And if you would, like a special treat, a Friday night with a full moon works the best. Following up on Mr. Bonner's comments on our tree commission, we happen designated, I received today a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation that we have been designated as a Tree City USA site for 2013. And there's four criteria for that. We've met all four criteria, and largely in part to the tree commission and their good works. The result of that distinction, I think, is important to the city. Next one is city run. We had a 5K event this past Saturday that was sponsored primarily by Oakwood Church, with the sole intentions of offering proceeds for that to go to the city of Chillicothe to purchase fireworks for this summer's fireworks event. We're happy to report that they gave us a check for $5,000, a real check would be coming. They just had the big card for one there at the event.
Will we cash that?
Yeah, no, I don't think so. But the, you know, it was a well-run event, and certainly in the good spirit of the community and backed by churches and just people that are interested, the best coming to the city. And we certainly appreciate that. There were some scheduling snafus along the way. I debriefed with Dave Tenner. One was the conflict with ACT test at the high school. Nobody, I guess, really thought that the high school would be up and running Saturday morning prior to 9:00, but they were. And my apologies, my public apologies for any problems that were caused down there. And then it was a photograph, a photograph taken down in the park. We did check on that, and they were told that the pictures would be taken later in the morning or early afternoon, but that wasn't the case, and there was a conservative traffic jam down there. So we live and learn. Otherwise, this event was well thought out, well scheduled, and well executed. And my last thing is, please, now that the green is coming upon us and grass is growing and bushes are growing, we're revitalizing the project that we began last year, Multi-City Hope. And that's using the church volunteers across the city to clean up for those that can't afford to have it done or physically unable to do it themselves. This program last year was, had a very strong showing. It worked in a lot of people's lives. And, you know, this lengthens people's ability to stay in their homes by being, being able to be probably what the outside looks like. And it's good work that the folks of the churches in the community really enjoy becoming engaged in and certainly our thanks on our part for that. So if there's anybody in your ward that would be a candidate for some help, we are collecting names and addresses. We have two stipulations. One, we do not do rental properties, which is a responsibility of the landlord to do. And the second thing is, we don't do inside-the-home projects, because I just don't want to put those people in that situation where something gets misplaced or something comes up missing and all of a sudden the good people go in the good river or suspect. So it's exterior award only, and we are certainly open to any old candidates, and we would be most happy to help them out this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other things?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Without my voice tonight, just one quick comment on, I believe it's item two, the hard billing issue. Just wanted to remind council that the budget projections, the revenue projections for this year included hard billing as part of that EMS schedule. So we're already through a quarter of the year without hard billing going to effect. We may have to revise those projections as it is. I'm not commenting one way or the other on how I think you should vote, but we did discuss this during a bunch of talks in the fall. And the plan was, at least at the time, to implement that hard billing, to raise that even more. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Law Director?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Law Director's Office has recently been working on numerous responses on behalf of the city in regard to some bankruptcy and foreclosure cases that have been filed. It seemed to be an upturn in that. We're also working with the municipal court clerk and judges to develop a plan for collecting outstanding bond forfeiture monies. It's a tedious process because it involves not only the city of Chillicothe, but also the working with prosecutor's office, who would be statutory counsel for the sheriff's office, and also somebody would be attorney general's office, who would be statutory counsel for the highway patrol, and numerous other agencies that write criminal cases through the municipal court. But we're trying to work on something, a way to generate some of those funds coming back through. And this being the eve of Tax Day, we anticipate some activity in regard to collecting city income taxes and working with the auditor's office to improve collecting on outstanding taxes. And that's my report.
Thank you. Report from the chair. I have nothing to report this evening. Next, we will move to audience participation. Any member of the audience wish to speak? Council Rule 21 limits a speaker to five minutes and each subject to 15. So if you want to address council, please give your name and address for the clerk and sign a sign-in sheet for us. The floor is yours.
My name's Alan Davis. I live at 370 Braywood. There were three items that I've seen in the newspaper recently that I just felt that I could comment on. I did leave a package in each council person's place with a lot more detail than I can do in five minutes. Council member terms. I found a section in the revised Ohio Revised Code, I don't know if it's the right one, but it seems to address that issue. There's a lot of discussion in the paper lately on the local government fund and the cuts it's had. Obviously, they've had a negative impact. I haven't seen any discussion in those articles, though, that the legislature actually did three things. They cut the funding, they passed some issues so that state auditor's office could help cities sooner, and then they passed Senate Bill 5, which was going to give cities more control over their benefits, employee benefit costs. It was Proposition 2 that eliminated that. So while we want to, we may want to negatively talk about the local government fund cuts, I think it's only fair, if you're going to talk about that, we should talk about the impact of Proposition 2. Back in January, the third one, back in January, 1426 assignment was done, where they asked the engineering department to work with the city engineering committee to come up with a plan. Sometimes, well, from my background, it's best to have a plan first before we start talking about finances. I don't know if that's still an active council assignment or whether that plan's been developed, but I haven't seen it. So I did add some items on the back of the first page, that just some statistics from a study that I did last year. I do think one thing that I don't hear talked about is the fact that the city does have a stream of funding that the Ohio Revised Code does anticipate would be used for actual Is there a way to free up some of those to actually do some paving? And so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other members of the audience wish to address city council?
My name's William Barnhart. I live at 373 McKellar Street. I'm city council. I'm invested in PA system. My hearing's not quite as good as what it used to be and it's harder to hear some people that don't have a loud voice. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Pat Patrick for all her help in my dealings with the Board of Health, Environmental Division. They finally set the paint chips in after five weeks and instead of coming back with a low enough lead content in the paint that it wasn't considered dangerous, but they told me so many stories that I wouldn't believe whatever that guy told me. He told me once that he's going to bag it up and consider it as lead paint. He told me once that the Huntington Bank had documentation that they painted it in 2002, but that don't mean they didn't paint over top of the paint. They don't have no documentation where they scraped it down to the metal. And last week, Council President Reinhart, you made a couple of statements that I totally disagree with. Like I said, I couldn't hear everything you said, but you said you thought council was doing a good job. Well, I know thirty registered voters that think council and the mayor are doing a bad job. The other statement you made, you was talking about the carryover fund. If I'm not mistaken, if I am, I figure our auditor will correct me. The $5 raise they put on our garbage fee in October 2012 for a whole year brought in a half a million dollars. You take that away from the general fund, how much carryover do you have then? And I've never been a one that pays for something for almost two years before I get it. And I'm talking about the garbage trucks. I used to come to council meetings until I got discouraged, but I was at the meetings before they raised the $5 fee. And it's my impression that they raised it to buy garbage trucks and to improve the garbage collection. The only thing I see we got out of it was a full-time parks director. We got a part-time mayor, part-time auditor, part-time law director, and we got a full-time parks director. And the only two complaints I ever heard about the parks and the flood wall, I think I walked sixteen hundred miles, so I was on the flood walk quite a bit. I seen the grass on the flood wall over four foot high. That's a shame. So you guys pat yourself on the back, but there's a lot of registered voters that are unhappy with you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. Any other members wish to address city council? Okay, moving forward, old business. Oh, I'm sorry. No, please, absolutely. I did not, you were behind Mrs. Patrick. I didn't see you there. Absolutely.
Senator Reinhart, council members, Mayor Anderson. I'm Angie Trigo. I'm with the Feast of the Flowering Moon Committee. I'm secretary. And I believe that the ordinance for the Feast of the Flowering Moon this year has been assigned to committee. I just want to come tonight and see if there are any questions on anything, if there's anything we can answer for you. And thank council for taking the time to look at the resolution and hopefully maybe waive the three reading rule. I don't know what point we're at, but I do think it's been assigned to committee. So if there's any questions, feel free to contact me or feel free to ask.
I apologize. Could I have your name and address again, please?
It's Angie Trigo. You need my full address?
Who do you represent? That's fine.
Feast of the Flowering Moon.
Okay.
I'm the secretary for Feast.
That's good.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, any other members of the audience wish to address council? Don't want to cut anybody off. Now we'll move forward to old business. Any council members have any old business? Ms. Patrick?
I just have one item I wanted to bring up so council was aware of it. As of Friday, April 11th, the nuisance abatement board has sent out ninety nuisance event notices. And for us to be able to send out ninety, we had to get two ten-day notices from Officer Pratt. And last time I checked, with Officer Pratt, he was over three hundred and fifty ten-day notices being sent out. So, and I've heard nothing but praise for this being put in the paper. The citizens like to see this being done and I just hope it's continued. That's all I've got.
Gee, thank you, Mrs. Patrick.
If I may add on to that, he's spreading close to four hundred parking tickets, too, which haven't been so popular.
Mr. Davis?
I would just like to piggyback on the mayor about the Open Door first run, first annual city run that they had Saturday. It was an awesome event for over three hundred and sixty runners and walkers. And it was, it was just so well organized that we're kind of using that as a template for people who want to have a 5K run. And the goal is to get 5K runs all the months from April through October when the weather starts getting bad because there's so many people participated and brought people downtown and it always puts a spotlight on the city. In addition to thanking the Open Door volunteers, also want to thank the Safety Service Department for putting up and taking down barricades and the Police Department for monitoring traffic and all the participants who were there because it was a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman?
We'll be going to old business. Mr. Fawcett just had a birthday.
Shall we sing happy birthday or just congratulate? Well, I'd like to officially then wish our clerk, Mr. Fawcett, happy birthday. Look, the clerk says we're moving forward, so. Okay, any other old business? That was a good one, Dave. Okay. No further old business to discuss, petitions and correspondence? Mr. Birthday Boy, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I did receive a notice from the Ohio EPA concerning a public notice that they have published regarding the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, permits or modifications. And this is being advertised in a local newspaper, which contains all the information about it. The address of the facility and the name where the discharge occurs is the Chillicothe Correctional Institute on State Route 104 north and that the receiving stream is the Sylt River. And it also indicates how you can provide comments if you wish. Secondly, I did receive a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control pertaining to the transfer of permits from Ohio CBS Stores LLC, doing business as CBS Pharmacy Number 5434 of 1950 Hard Road in Columbus, Ohio, to Ohio CBS Stores LLC, doing business as CBS Pharmacy 6189, located at 11 Centennial Boulevard here in Chillicothe. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk. Any new business? Mr. Tutzel?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Last week, I attended an event over at Chillicothe High School, the induction of the students into the Annual Honor Society. What an event. Chillicothe had more students, inducted, the seniors, inducted into the hall to the National Honor Society than it ever had before. Thirty-nine students inducted and every single one of them has scholarships. They're going to Ivy League schools, they're going to Naval Academy. There's at least ten of them going to Ohio State and all over the place. And I think they should be commended for this effort. By the way, there were also thirty-five juniors into that. That's incredible, Mr. Duke. They're doing a great job in there. And they have very, very bright kids. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that conversation, Tom. Any other new business? Mr. Bonner?
Yes, thank you, President Reinhart. Maybe if the mayor could answer a question a few people have asked me. They're interested in the flood walling, construction, the practice drills for putting the flood wall. They want to know when the next one of those is coming around.
We haven't done those for a number of years. Those take overtime first, which is the main reason we've shied away from them. That also takes coordinated effort between the engineering staff and the safety services. With the current state of the safety service, overtime, we probably will not be doing one this year. But I've talked to Conde and we are going to schedule one for next year because it has been about five years since we've done that. And all that is, they're not electronic doors or anything like that. They're actually stackable barriers that go up in the roadways. We have to shut down Brook Street, shut down Main Street, shut down High Street when we do it. But it's good to get all the debris cleared out of the rails underneath there that the very long handle fits in. So it is time to do one again, but we'll probably do it next year and plan that into the engineering budget.
I'll pass that on. And it is a good idea because the more people that know how to do it, the better to have them available when the emergency comes around. Now, thank you. I'll pass that.
Any other new business? Mrs. Ames?
I have two items. The Chillicothe Fire Department is having its annual, second annual fishing day on Saturday, April 26th, beginning at 9:30 at Yachtangy Park, the lake, with a small line in lower class taught by Henry Stanley. The fishing derby will begin at 10 o'clock. The children are asked to be accompanied by an adult. This event is being targeted at children and no fishing license is needed for children to participate. The lake will be stocked by ODNR the day before, prior to the event, and the fire department will pay a grant through ODNR to buy the bait and some tackle for those fishing and refreshments will also be served. And also, the Parks and Rec Department is taking donations for the city swimming pool. We're looking for business sponsors, civic sponsors, and individuals who want to contribute. We have different levels of sponsorship with different incentives and you can find information about the pool on the city website at www.chillicothe.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Any other new business? Moving forward. Committee assignments and meeting dates. At our last legislative meeting, they issued the following committee assignments. 14-56 to the Safety Services Committee, request for legislation to appropriate $5,336.50 to purchase a radio for the Chillicothe Police Department to capture emergency broadcasts from Chillicothe City Schools. 14-57 to the Finance Committee, request for legislation for the city to pay the Chillicothe Ross Convention and Visiting Bureau 33% of the lodging and bed tax collected by the city. 14-58, the Safety Services Committee, request for legislation to accept and appropriate two checks, in total of $3,500 issued to the Chillicothe Police Department for training. That item actually is item number eight this evening. 14-59, the Utilities Committee, request for legislation to appropriate $5,000 to replace the water admin postage fund. That item is item number three. 14-60 to the Finance Committee, request for legislation to appropriate additional $2,000 in the income tax department to replace the computers and servers. And it looks like we'll probably have a review session sometime in this next month with relation to the mayor's request to have the police chief command to go over their program. I think a review session is probably the more appropriate forum for that. So once we can work out the date with that, with the mayor and the police chief, we'll look for that here in the next couple of weeks. So other than that, the other off nights are open again. If anybody has anything in committee as well that they want to address or talk about in a review session forum, again, please let me know. And, you know, as long as I get the, get the request by Friday, can give an official public notice out over the weekend. So just let me know, we're pretty open. That will bring us to legislation. Item number one.
Third reading of an ordinance amending, approving the action of the Planning Commission of the City of Chillicothe in rezoning property located at 171 East Fifth Street, Chillicothe, Ohio, from older neighborhood, single-family residential, R3, to residential office, R-O, and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $5,000 for utilities, department, postage, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-reading rule.
Do you have that second by Ms. Gray? Roll call to suspend the rules?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
That motion carries, roll call and the ordinance?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
That motion carries, the three-reading rule will be waived, roll call and the ordinance?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $10,000 from unappropriated Parks and Recreation Capital to fund the purchase of trees by the Chillicothe Tree Commission and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhart. As I mentioned in my report, I would like to waive the rules as these trees are under the law.
Motion, or, motion to waive the rule seconded by Mrs. Ames? Roll call to suspend the rules?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
The rules are suspended, roll call and the ordinance?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
That motion carries, roll call and the ordinance?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Proll?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Tutzel?
Yes.
That motion is adopted. The ordinance is adopted. Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $3,500 received from the Ross County Auditor's Office to be used by the Chillicothe Police Department for training and declaring an emergency. First reading.
At this time, I respectfully ask that we waive the three-reading rule.
Second by Mrs. Neal? Roll call to suspend the rules?
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?